Good evening and welcome to the Old Colony School Committee meeting of Wednesday, August 19, 2020. Tonight, we are joined by our full committee that includes, actually all but one of our full committee, that includes Steve Cassidy from Mattapoisett, David Hughes from Rochester, Dawn Oster from Lakeville, Richard Gomash from Mattapoisett, Dawn Williams from Carver, John Danzel from Carver, Shirley Burke from Rochester, Evelyn Hulley from Acushnet, Almar Marshall from Lakeville, Maurice Saintaman from Acushnet, Justin Broder from Acushnet, Gary Mansfield from Lakeville, Nancy Sousa from Mattapoisett, Joanne Pushkar from Carver. Mrs. Cruz sends her regrets, she was unable to join us this evening. We are also joined by Sarah Griffith, the business manager, Joanne Costa, secretary to the school committee, Pan Rosendez from our transportation company, and I am Aaron Kleski, superintendent-director of Old Colony Regional Locational Technical High School. At this point in time, I would like to turn the meeting over to our school committee chair, Mr. Shirley Burke from Rochester.
Thank you, Aaron, and welcome, everyone. Going to quickly into the consent agenda, I am awaiting the reading of the items and requesting a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'm so moved.
Having a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. You said Joanne? The warrants are available for review. Quickly moving into the school calendar, I know we think we're done with the school calendar, but it's an ever-changing document. I'm going to ask for a motion to approve in a second, and then, Aaron, we discuss--
I second David's motion.
Aaron, do you want to discuss?
We had an April 2 Good Friday that was overlooked, so we had to add a day to the end of the school calendar to ensure that we have 170 days on the school calendar.
Can you repeat it?
I'm sorry. We originally overlooked the Good Friday, there was an accident, we overlooked Good Friday, so we had to add a day to the end of the school year to account for the 170 days.
Question to the chair, is the school calendar presently, and I spoke to Aaron previous to this, taking into consideration the commission's rivalries, reduction of 180 days to 170?
I believe it does.
So the first 10 days of the school year around with no students, and the reason for that logic is so that we can put forth the best possible product through the first 10 days being allocated to the professional development and actually setting up all the Google Classroom and the technological platforms that we're going to be using, so that we can put forth the best product possible through the students that we serve.
Kevin, can I ask that question? We answered when we sit and meet with the teamsters, because that may be open for debate. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, anything else?
That is tomorrow evening, correct?
Yes. The public transportation bid, I'm not going to ask for the recommended motion at this time, because I would like Sarah--
You can actually make--
Oh, I'm sorry, if we vote the school calendar, my apologies, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Motion, we accept it.
All those in favor?
Aye. Shirley, aye. Aye.
Wait a minute, Steve has a question. Is this for seven years or five years? No, no, we're back at the school calendar, that's my--
Oh, I thought we didn't use one. I have a question there. Does the school calendar have anything to do with tomorrow evening? Would talk to the teachers?
It maybe is topical conversation.
So can it be abated, or revisited?
At this point, if it has to be amended, we will amend it.
But why are we doing it now if we need tomorrow?
Because--
Is there-- If there's a specific question that you would like to ask Kevin, if I may--
Please.
Earlier at our meetings, you had asked me to check with the commissioner about whether or not the calendar can be used to meet with students, to which he responded, it is permissible use, that we are permitted to meet with students during those 10 days. Those 10 days do not count as time on learning, and that's the clarifying piece that he made very clear to the entire superintendency of MASs during the meeting. So I just want to make sure that people understand what Kevin's question was about how those days can or cannot be used--
That's why I asked the question, the chair.
So just out of respect for his inquiry, he did ask me to correspond with the commissioner, which I did, and he followed up with information pertaining to approval of our model. So I just wanted to share--
Thank you, I appreciate that, my solid.
Any other questions on that subject? So if there are none, we have a second, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor of approving the school calendar?
Aye.
All right. Anyone opposed? Do, Jolene, have the people that are sitting in, has had a vote in? Okay. Now, so where you are with the school transportation bid?
So after what has been a very long spring, I'm bringing the committee a recommendation for vote for a pupil transportation contract. We were brought one bid by First Student, a few other vendors attended the bid opening, but just to see how it went and ask questions and, you know, meet us, I think, probably.
Not one other person bidded, though?
No other bids. I had nine vendors pull our bid this year, that's the most I've ever had. Actually, had a conversation with Inspector General's office, and they said, "That's fantastic." They were so excited, they said, "I had nine vendors pull your bid." I said, "Yeah, we got there, a lot of interest in the contract," but no one wanted to bid on it. So I'm thankful that First Student wanted to bid on the contract, especially with everything that happened in the spring and all the unknowns going forward for next school year.
Right, and that's the one that came in just a few years ago?
Yes, they came in three years ago.
Mr. Almeida, who had the contract before, and he just passed away last year, by the way.
Graham, Jeff Graham.
There you go. So his daughter's always inquiring, I know that.
And they asked--
She loves his school, and they've had that contract for a long time.
Yeah, they asked for the bid.
So I don't know why she wouldn't apply.
Yeah, I don't know either, I don't know. They asked for the bid, and then they were sent every communication after that, because that is what the law requires once a vendor asks for the bid, but they did not submit a bid and they did not come to the bid opening.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for letting us know that, though.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Bob.
Sarah, if I may, is it unusual to have only one bid?
I think it is more usual to have one bid. I have heard most other school districts, even if they have a lot of interest in the contract and they have multiple vendors ask for the bid, they usually only have one bid, and that is the vendor that has the contract previously.
Okay, thank you.
So this recommendation for the committee is to award a five-year contract to First Student.
Isn't it usually three?
I came to the committee and asked for a potential for a five-year with two option years, and everyone voted to allow that.
Did I miss that meeting?
Yes, it was the last meeting.
Yeah, I drove here, but I didn't know it was a Zoom meeting, so I was in the parking lot with nobody.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Stan.
So that is the recommendation for award tonight. I will say, the bid came back with very fair pricing for five years, pricing that I think the school district will be able to incorporate into our budget. I wanted to communicate that to everyone.
Has anyone ever had a five-year bid on a busing contract?
Oh, yes, yes.
Who? Previous, any previous ones?
Here.
And Sarah, I'm not giving you a hard time, but any previous ones here at this school that have five-year contracts?
I will have to look for them.
I don't believe we have one, we don't have five, we have three. So I'd like to know other schools that might have had that.
Sure, I can look into other schools.
Because I'm never into giving away the farm, you know what I mean?
We're not giving away the farm. But I'll give you--
I just like old-school practice, that's me. So whatever it is, though, I think I'm going to vote for this.
Sure.
Madam Chair.
Hold on, Bob.
Okay.
But does it bother you that you only get one bid and you kind of get the feeling that, ooh, everybody's got their own little school and they're going to bid them up?
Yeah.
And we're in trouble because we can't get a--
My first year here, my first bid here, was in 2017, 16 years to 17, and we got to bid that year. That was the first year that I had bid this contract. I think other school districts do wish that other vendors would bid on the contract, you know, just to see if someone else had interest in it. I know that recently, locally, other vendors have bid on local school district contracts and won that bid. So ORR's contractor has changed over the last three years, they have a new contract there, and so I know that locally, we have had more interest from other bus companies.
It's not uncommon, and as a matter of fact, there have been several folks throughout the state who have articulated the desire to see more folks at the table, but it is actually very common to see single companies--
To have one. And let us not forget that nine companies pulled the bid.
Yes.
Eight line hoes, they chose not to put in a bid. So the interest was there, we can't dictate who puts a bid in or not, and quite frankly, the experience we've had with First Student in this last three-year cycle, this last contract, has been a very good relationship.
Their customer service, both to the student, the parent, and the school district, has been fantastic.
So you're saying the one before was lousy?
I'm saying that the experience that I've had with First Student, they value the relationship, they value the student, the parent, their safety.
And I think the one prior did also, and I'm good friends with the Tremblay family that has our contract at our school, so I'm going to see if I can learn just a little more history.
Yes.
That bothers me, though.
The prior contract, it was different, you know, can we just leave it at that date?
Well, I'm just really kind of upset that I just didn't know, and granted, I wasn't here, but I've always been, it's just a big part of the budget. It's a lot of what we do and what we say and what we bring in and who we respect.
Yeah, this is--
In a five-year plan, I would never-- We were out for a million years.
Yeah, since April, I think this has been ongoing, yeah.
Yeah, no, I've been following it.
Yeah, we discussed it, and, you know.
Are there any other questions?
Yes, this figure of $4,170,000, in the line above it says for a period of five years, is that $4 million over five years, is that what I'm reading?
Yes.
Thank you.
Chuck, Jane.
Anyone else?
Shirley?
I got it. Yes.
I'd like to move the recommended action.
Secretary of Defense, sir, I have just one question. When would the, this is, you have a two-year option? When would that be picked up, the option?
That will come to the school committee for vote in the spring, the end of 2025. So 2025, April, May, 2025, it'll come to the school committee at that time for vote on option years. The option year pricing was submitted with the bid and was included in your packet?
Yep.
Just so you know?
It just saves two years.
If you choose to avoid it?
Increase, yeah, they increase much more than the years prior.
We have a motion to approve in a second, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
No. For the record, I want to be a no on that.
Should read the entire, make sure it's right on record, so we should let her finish the entire, we should make sure you have the chance to read the entire vote before we vote.
Who would like me to read it?
I think it's important to have it on--
Do you want Dawn to read it, where he recommends the action?
That would be great, just so that it's, because this is live-streamed, I think we should really be reading the entire vote.
I make a motion to award the pupil transportation contractor First Student Incorporated for a period of five years, fiscal year 2021 to fiscal year 2025, and a total contract price of approximately $4,170,610. Let me say that again, $4,170,610. Total contract price is based on estimated bus usage, mileage, and driver wait times, which are subject to change as stated on the bid pricing form.
We have a change to accomplish.
Again, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Stan, Joanne, you muted?
Sousa, aye.
Joanne Pushkar?
Oh, I'm sorry, I hit the flag on the thing, aye.
Thank you.
All those opposed on the post? I'm standing.
13 in favor? One opposed?
Going to move to the posting protocol, and again, I'm going to hold off on the recommended action until Jolene provides us with an explanation of this.
All right, good evening, everyone. So this is a different side for me. So I brought this to the full committee because over the spring and summer, things have changed, as we all know, especially with towns.
Excuse me, folks, who is speaking, please?
Jolene.
I am, Bob, Jolene.
Okay, thank you. I couldn't find you.
Okay, I'll speak up as well. So we found that, just through my interaction with the clerk's office, that sometimes, not sometimes, but during the spring and summer, they've been short-staffed or their hours have changed. So when I send postings typically to the clerks, there are times where someone wouldn't be in. They'd post them a couple days later, but there are times where if they're not there. So if this posting protocol to adopt the alternative posting method would give me the ability to post on our website, and that would be the official posting site, then I would send the clerks the directions to go to the website, so the public can see it, they will post that either on their website or their board in their office, and the public will be able to go, see where our posting is, and everything will be there, the public posting, minutes' agendas. And this falls under the Mass Attorney General's regulation for regional school districts, so that's what we would like to do, with us the official posting entity, and kind of take that burden off of the towns moving forward.
We can move to read that.
Second motion.
Is there any questions, but-- I consider this makes a lot of sense. Must have districts with 15 towns that must just go bonkers, and if it's, we're our own entity to a point, even though we're part of our town, we're our own physical entity.
It basically centralizes, so everybody gets redirected to one location, and they can post an ongoing, please reference the following, and they'll get redirected to us, is that correct?
Yes. So they'll be able to go on our website and--
The towns are still going to be posting it all night?
So, no, the towns don't have to post it. If we adopt this, the towns do not have to post. What I will do is I send them warnings that I perceived, and that will be posted, and it'll basically say, I don't have it for bait in front of me, but, under the regulations, Old Colony has adopted the alternative posting method, you can find the posts at oldcolony.us, and that'll bring them to me. I just have to give them direction on where the public can find the posting, and once I do that, they can post that, and that's the only posting they'll actually have to ever make.
Jolene, so that town's good with that?
So--
Acushnet, I'm just worried about, actually, because nothing else is my business.
So I haven't reached out to specific towns, because it's an option that we have as a district. It's an option that we have that the school committee can make, and once that's done, I can contact them. Out of courtesy, I can still send postings to them, and they can choose to file them, but they don't have to post if they don't want to. Takes the burden off of them, I've heard from clerk's office who are short-staffed, hours are different, mail-in ballots, they're overwhelmed, so if this takes one more thing off the plate for them and we can post four of them, it's an option for them. But I can still send them, you know, if the school committee wants me to send them as a courtesy, I can still do that.
Shirley? Yes, go ahead.
I just, per open meeting laws, we're just required to maintain a static notice in each of our district towns, stating to Jolene's point, where they can locate our postings. We don't need the town to per se to participate, but, I mean, from my perspective, I think reaching out to five towns for all of our meetings and sub-meetings is not a valuable use of Jolene's time, so I support this thoroughly.
Thank you, Joanne.
Thank you for all your help, Joanne, with that.
Shirley?
Yes, Bob.
Yeah, I certainly understand the reason for wanting to change this policy, but I would disagree to some extent with Joanne, and I'm going to vote for this, but I still disagree, I think, I think it would be best, I think I heard Jolene say a moment ago that she would continue, or did she say she could continue, I'm not sure. I thought I heard her say she would continue to send the postings. I think if it's just a matter of a click of a mouse and so forth, and I'm sure I'm oversimplifying, but if it is, then I would say it's better to err on the side of letting people know. I am going to vote for this, but I do have some reservations.
Well, as Jolene has stated, she can still send out the notices, and it is up to the town what they choose to do with it, whether--
Absolutely.
--it's or not, but they have been notified of meetings and where the posting will be universally kept on our website.
Madam Chair, this is Nancy. I just don't understand if we're going to adopt this to help Jolene with the workload of sending it to five towns, why are we sending it to the towns? I just don't understand, we're trying to, you know, streamline things, and now all of a sudden, we're going back and sending it to the towns, so I'm in favor of it, I just don't know why we're duplicating effort again, when we're trying to streamline things.
So a lot of this, the town of Carver will take the cross for this. The town clerk has approached, I know at least myself, about being unable to continue to post our postings, or they've been up late, or they haven't been compliant for 48 hours that's required by Master and the law. By doing this and adopting this, this will just keep the district and all the district's towns 100% to be compliant with the law. It's, I don't, not speaking for Jolene, but I don't think this is anything about workload or anything like that, this is just so the committee is in compliance with the law, because the town of Carver recently had some big changes in clerk's office, and a lot of the clerks are going to be overworked in the next few months with everything that's going on with the elections and mail-in ballots and prolonged early voting and et cetera. So this is just to keep us compliant with the 48-hour posting requirement by Master and the law.
Thank you, John. Any other questions? I believe we had a motion and a second, did we not, Jolene? Having that, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All those opposed? None? Motion is approved. Policy Subcommittee, Joanne?
So the Policy Subcommittee has put forth two policies to be voted on this evening. Both of them are in regards to COVID-related items. One, which is EBCFA, which is the policy to require face mask usage while in the building, even if you're six feet apart, and the second is a supplement that outlines all of the updates to each policy impacted by COVID and what the amendment is. It's in the packet, it was in the packet for everybody to review.
I don't know if anybody have any questions?
I have motion to accept both data, both policies. EBC-S on related issues and EBCFA on face coverings, are you moving both?
Hybride and all.
Excuse me?
Hybride.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Are there any other questions on these policies? Hearing none, all those in favor?
If we approve, we have to put on our face masks.
Aye.
Are you kind of naked without telling you the truth?
Although, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Dawn is opposed. Any extensions? Hearing none, the motion passes. From the administration, Aaron, is there an update on fall reopening?
Guidance is released almost daily now, we continue to follow the guidance, we are working collaboratively with our staff. I'd like to again reiterate how appreciative we are of the many stakeholders who have contributed to our process. We will be releasing an updated calendar and additional information following meetings that will take place with our teachers' union. We very much feel as though the collaborative process needs to continue and that the final crossing of Ts and dotting of Is is going to take place in a collaborative fashion prior to the start of school. We look forward to that. I think it's a testament to what takes place here at Old Colony. I think when I look around the state, I couldn't be more proud of our teachers and our entire staff for what they put into this. It includes parents, students, committee members, who have come together to bridge communication, stay informed, and do what's best for our students. So we will have final details released to the public, with T's crossed and Is dotted, hopefully, early next week.
Any questions for Aaron? Hearing none. Cafeteria reopening update, Sarah, do you want to take this floor?
We've had conversations with our cafeteria staff, just to keep people informed, we're going to be keeping it, that's a self-funded program, and so we know that with half of our students attending school compared to the full group of students attending school, we'll have to keep a close eye on the revenues generated by that program. Our cafeteria staff has come up with some creative ways to supplement what could be lost income, and there'll be some, and I want to say this while we're live-streaming on Facebook, there'll be meals available to families for purchase, that can be purchased likely on, I'm sorry, group dinners, group lunches, and we'll continue to keep the committee informed as we progress through the first month of school. If for some reason we have any concern around the progress or the process as it pertains to revenues, we will revisit those, the data, in the month of September, and we'll provide to you something. But I want to congratulate our nutrition director, Crystal Andrade, for an incredible job. I know that she's been here prior to my being here, but what Sarah and Crystal have done to resurrect that program is really a beautiful thing, and it's a testament to Crystal's management skills. I don't think we could ever find a better person to serve in that role. She is truly the epitome of the person we want leading that charge, and is selfless in everything she does. I think that anyone who meets her can reiterate or can speak to that. I'm just so proud of the way she manages our food services program, and I think warrants a public thank you, so.
I know for myself, my family, I went home with the news that it may be-- I know for myself, my family, I went home with the news that there may be meals to go. And I have a funny feeling that a majority of the Berg family might be having supper via Old Colony site. My daughter is very excited about the thought. This grandmother, who may not have to come home from work and feed the family, is right behind it as well. So something, you know, spread it out in the community because this may be something that unintentionally is a benefit.
I do think that all, all Old Colony meetings from now on should be dinner meetings.
Here we go. There we go. If we can throw in dessert in there, we're good. We're golden. Okay, future business?
I have a question.
Sure, David.
Will the students be eating primarily in the cafeteria?
So what we've done is students will, students who are not buying lunch during their lunch period, we report immediately to the gymnasium because we cannot, the guidance around eating in a six-foot distance, we cannot fit every student into the cafeteria, so there'll be multiple shifts for eating. And the students will begin in the gymnasium and then we'll work our way to the cafeteria. Much like the buses will be loaded, a student from the first stop will go to the back of the bus and then they'll move their way to the front to minimize passing traffic. So for the filling of seats, we'll begin in the gymnasium and we'll backfill all the way to the cafeteria. But they'll be eating in two locations, six feet apart, at desks, not tables, and that will be the gymnasium and cafeteria.
Thank you.
So if you went into the cafeteria, you would see that desks already getting. Okay, future business. Yes, Steve?
Yep, phys ed will be remote and it will be taught in live time. So it actually, phys ed will not take place in the building. The academic classes are all.
Kind of what I was driving, there was going to be tables there, like desks in the gym.
Right, and that, and because it'll be remote, students will actually be taking their phys ed classes from home. They won't be in the gym. The only classes that will be taking place in Old Colony are going to be for vocational areas. Then our high need students that are called in and we will be selecting those students. Will be coming in and they'll be working with our powers in a supportive fashion as needed.
Okay. Future business is just the upcoming meetings. Tomorrow night, we have the negotiating subcommittee meeting. September 9th, Budget Subcommittee, and our next District School Committee is September 16th. No other? Go ahead.
Meeting in person? Six-year hybrid?
Well, as we are.
Or is it going to be same as this?
As we are tonight, we're a hybrid meeting.
Be the same as this? Thank you.
Yep.
Because I hate computers.
I hear you.
So tomorrow night, it starts at six?
Six.
But at what time should we be here? Is there anything before or after?
Well, we'll post it for 6:00.
But you don't come in at 5:00 or 5:30? No?
Not at this, not at this moment, no.
Yeah, it's 24 hours, it's 24 hours from now.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, let's extend my thanks to everybody, both at home and those of you who came in, and this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.